Where did they go, Mark? Never, all the...
So, Brezner, has he been making it, did he say?
He was replying to Ryan. He told me everybody contacted and we said yes, so as far as I know, he should be here.
And you invited the whole city council, didn't you?
No, no, we want that part of the committee. Part of the committee.
I thought, I thought when I read...
Yeah, everybody gets invited because it's like anything else is open.
Oh, yes, I did. I know I did, because I just read that. I was going crazy.
That for you, I should be on this way. He's coming back from over there.
Did you get this one too?
This response, this is his email. This is the response.
All right, I've met before.
Dennis Burks.
Very nice to meet you. Juan Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Any relations to Mary Burks?
Yes.
She's your mom's?
She's my...
I love her. I was talking to her last night.
Shall we wait a few more minutes and see what the deal is? But officially, we're supposed to start at seven, and I did it at seven, so it gives people time. Because I know you couldn't make it, so.
With me?
You were able to get out?
I got here before, yeah. Oh, no, I put my foot down. I said, "This is important, and I gotta be there." And she's like, "Well, you better make sure you got everything in order." So, from when the moment I got there at nine in the morning, I was like busting my behind. Gotta make sure things are ordered.
The meeting, I don't see minutes. Do we have the old minutes?
Yeah, it's right here. It's there. Oh, no, no, it's not. He sent it as an email. Want it? I have my phone. Do you want it? Do you want to read it from the phone? So, I'm gonna leave this on.
I hope mine, but I just want everybody to know that we did have it, so when we go on air that we are due it.
Eight plus?
Uh, yeah.
Grandbladder is due tomorrow.
Yeah?
Supposedly.
He sent it, what day, what time?
He sent it today.
To everybody?
Yeah, yeah, let me check and I'll tell you the time. Sent it at two forty-three. At two what? Two forty-three, yeah.
Four committee meetings, great. Any chance, is that the one?
No, it says previous meeting minutes of eight-eight-seventeen.
I got it.
You got it?
Did he send it in email?
Yeah.
To everybody?
I'll tell you who's in here. Uh, you're not on here. Why? Sent it to Irene. She's not on this committee.
Doesn't know I'm on this committee then?
Send it to Michael Sullivan, Jan Brezner and Bobus, and then me, Irene and Dennis. Irene's not on it. It's Niles. So, I can forward it to you.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
What's your...
So, it's J dot Anderson Burgos.
Anderson Burgos altogether. Oh, I missed something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the, the people that are listed here is the old people, but the older members, I mean.
Is that everybody needs to speak into the mics?
Testing, one, two?
Take it out of order, do I first?
Yes.
Does Mr. Soto is here to speak on item five?
So, good evening. We're here with the city council and the school joint committee. In present, we have myself, Gladys Lebron Martinez for Ward One.
Dennis Burks, School Committee, Ward Three.
Mildred Lefave, School Committee, Ward One.
Juan Anderson, Ward Six.
We also have before us our previous meetings that we must approve to and move forward, or we could table.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we have several items, but we would like to take something out of order. Is that right, Mr. Burks?
Yes, I'll make a motion to take item five out of order.
Second that, sorry.
Oh, sorry?
So, we're taking five, accepted? Out of order? Okay. So, thank you. We have an item filed by Councilor Ramon. Ordered that the city approved the following contract for shared services for a food service director with the city of Springfield to be paid for by the school department out of its budget. Shared director cost will be thirty thousand dollars, which will be paid to the city of Springfield that will house the food service director for the, for both districts. Could, would, could we ask, would you like to ask the representative from the school department to come forward and share their thoughts? All in favor, I'd need to ask?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for having me tonight. If you guys recall back in, for those of you that were here, in, at the beginning of this year, we did go out to bid for a new food service contract. And as part of that, Sodexo was awarded the contract, but under new management, which completely changed the way we operate our food service department. So, the food service management managers that were assigned to us were the same ones that, that run the school district in Springfield as well. It's been wonderful. We, we share services. And one of the things that we didn't have before in Holyoke was an independent item, make sure that the contractor is honoring the contract and filing on, looking out for our best interest. We didn't really have that. And this intergovernmental agreement that is in front of you is separate from the actual food service operating contract that has already been approved. This is for Springfield Public Schools Food Service Director to actually serve as our food service director. And they've been operating under that all year, and it's been amazing. This guy has, the guy, his name is Tim Gray, and he has over twelve years of experience running a food service program for twenty-eight thousand students. Their demographic is very similar to ours. Since he's been helping me out, we've already, you know, in the food service account, have identified sources of revenue that we didn't know were there before. I mean, to the tune of like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're already in the process of getting brand-new cafeteria tables in all of our schools. And those are gonna be going in February break. I already have a capital plan. Our finance, our financials that were out of date for about, almost a year are now, you know, we're finally getting caught up. And it's, you know, I'm very thankful that, that we have, we now have someone independent. Thirty thousand dollars a year as a, as an intergovernmental agreement, any of those, no matter what dollar amount, have to get approved by the city council. But I can just tell you that this is a huge bargain. If we had to hire our own food service director, the, the going rate for that is like eighty to ninety thousand dollars for a district this size with this demographic. And we're getting the best, in my opinion, the best in the state at a, at a bargain.
So, my question is, if we have issues, how quick is my response time? Especially since they are housed in, in the Springfield Public Schools. I'm assuming he doesn't have set hours here, or maybe he does, so maybe you can just go into, how does, how does he provide the service here for Holyoke? Is it just based out of Springfield, and it's whatever's told to him? Or does he actually come into our district, actually go into the schools, have some sort of time where he does have to spend it here once a week? Or...
So, as far as the operation itself goes, we have a district manager that is on-site that works for Sodexo. That person is based out of Central Supply. So, if there's any food service issues at all, that person works for us full-time and is on-site. The work that this food service director is doing is independent of the, the actual operation. He's actually monitoring and checking the billing every month. He's checking their operating statement. He's making sure that they're honoring the contract. He's, you know, I meet with them once a week, and we, we brainstorm ideas. He, he puts together a, a long-term capital plan, walked through all of our schools. He would be very responsive if you reached out to him. But the person that, you know, if there is issues, the person that you would reach out to is either myself or Ashley, not Tim Gray. He's providing a, a different service.
So, basically, he's check to checker?
He's making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. Sodexo is. And making sure that all of our reporting to the state is accurate. We used to have Rich Lesso, who works for Sodexo. He was filing all our claiming, so all, all the revenue coming in and all the reporting to DESI, he was doing that. And for the year that, you know, he worked with us while I was here, that was something that I wasn't completely comfortable with and knew I had to address eventually. And this is, this will be addressing that. I have somebody independent reporting information to the state and making sure that the food service operator that we have is doing what they're supposed to do and honoring the contract.
Gladys, excuse, I have just a couple more questions, but I don't know if somebody else had anything?
Go ahead. If anyone else...
So, because my own, my only, oh, I kinda had it like in my head, like how I wanted to say it. Is this something that's gonna be sustainable to continue doing? Or is this money that's being paid for because we might be receiving extra money? Or it's under the breakfast after the bell money that we receive? Like, how exactly is those thirty thousand? And then, is this something that's gonna be sustainable for a long term? Or is it something that can also be adjusted where maybe next year they might turn around and say, "Well, you know, inflation, now it's gonna be forty thousand"?
So, it's very sustainable because we have a, we have a very healthy food service account. The contract that we have with Sodexo right now guarantees a return to us of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars every single year for five years. They wanna beat that, so they strive to beat that and provide a quality food service program and return more than five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the district. So, what this is, is we're using a portion of that five hundred and fifty thousand dollar profit to, to have somebody make, I think it's gonna pay for itself tenfold, like, you know, since he's been here, we are gonna be expanding breakfast in the classroom, so there will be additional money. But at a minimum, for the next five years, there's gonna be a profit in that account of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The majority of that is gonna be reinvested back into the program, but I am holding back some of that. I was either going to hire somebody that works under me directly as our food service, independent food service director, or I was gonna do something like this. And I didn't even know that this would be an option and that Springfield wouldn't entertain it. But I'm, you know, this is, like I said, this is a bargain, and we got one of the best food service directors in the entire state. But it is, to answer your question and not to get off topic, yes, it's absolutely sustainable. It's not coming out of the city's general fund or the school department. It's coming out of our food service revolving account, which, which only can be used to reinvest into the food service program, and, and this is an eligible expense. So, so yes, it is sustainable, and it's five years, flat rate. There's nothing in there that says the rate's gonna go up over the next five years.
So, for the next five, so, two last questions. So, A, has he found anything where actually we are making some errors and we're actually getting back for it? B, if he leaves Springfield, that means technically we're stuck with whoever else comes back into Springfield. Am I correct?
You are correct.
And they may not be so great.
I have, I have a lot of confidence in my, my counterpart over there that he wouldn't hire somebody that's great. I don't know if, I, I, so I understand your concern, but it, it's not as concerning to me because I know what their hiring practice are, practices are over there. And the person that is working there, I mean, he's not going anywhere unless, you know, God forbid, something bad happens. I mean, that he's...
And has he found anything, like...
Absolutely. I mean, there was a, I mean, a month on the job, he found thirty-seven thousand dollars that wasn't going through the operating statement, and we didn't even have access to. Claimed it, and we got it from the state, and that was like two weeks into the job.
Is there gonna be a percentage we have to give back for any money that they find?
No.
So, it's just thirty thousand, doesn't matter if he finds us a hundred thousand?
Strictly, that, that's our fee for his service, and we have him, I mean, on paper, we have him, I believe it says fifteen hours a week, but he's, you know, he's here whenever I need him. And he's working more than that if needed.
Do you have anything to provide, like paper, something that we can read, go over?
I did send it electronically. I'm not sure if it was shared to you, but I only have one copy because I thought...
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to look over it. Thank you.
So, what you see in front of you is a, a contract that was drafted by the city of Springfield, which was vetted through our city solicitor's office already. They, they checked the language and our attorneys, and their attorneys went forward. And then, it, it shows there that the mayor of Springfield and their city council already voted to approve this. And they're just waiting for our signatures and waiting for us to do our part. And I'm, I'm very thankful that, you know, they've been providing this service all year. And we, I've been trying to get this through for a while, and they haven't stopped providing the service.
Are they working with any other cities?
We are the first, and primarily because of the relationship that I've had with them. And, but there's already other cities. They're building a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility over there. I think it costs something like four million dollars, where they are going to be able to cook fresh meals for other districts. We are gonna be the first district to benefit from that. So, right now, what we have, so we have prepackaged muffins, for example. Anything that's shrink-wrapped, we order that stuff outsourced and either store it in a freezer and serve it the next day. When that is in full operation, and I think it's going into operation this year, they'll be cooking, we won't be shrink-wrapping anything anymore. So, all of the muffins that our kids are eating, anything that's shrink-wrapped will be freshly made right there in the warehouse and delivered to us the very next day. So, there will be no storing period for any of that, those shrink-wrapped goods that we now buy and outsource and then store internally before we use them.
Do we know their track record, like how well they've been doing, how many years, and so on and so forth?
Yeah. I, I've worked in Springfield for ten years, and this was one of, what they're doing in Springfield with their food service program is like, is cutting-edge. The state is looking at them now as a model to do it in other areas. They, they've traveled around the country to see, Memphis, Tennessee was one, one district that is doing what they're attempting to do right now. They went and toured a few districts around the country that are operating a food service culinary center that is, is providing service to a lot of students and a lot of surrounding communities. They're the first in the state, in the state of Massachusetts to do something like this. And they're getting, you know, the state, they're, they're getting huge accolades and recognition for, for their program.
Quick question. Is there any way that maybe they can cross, this, the guy could cross-train one of the staff at a central office? Because now that I'm, I'm reading this, it was also approved by their mayor and their city council and by the approval of the superintendent. At any given time, the superintendent could end up leaving, or someone else may be appointed. And if that one comes in and says, "Nope, end this contract," we're back to square one. On the other hand, if he's able to cross-train an employee that we feel may be able to perform this job, then if something was to happen like that, then at least we're also bringing up an employee to a higher position that's already here. So, it's not like you're looking for somebody else. You're just gonna give someone more of an incentive for picking up this task.
That is definitely a possibility, and it's with the relationship that we have. It's, I, I, I agree with you. It's necessary. I mean, even myself, since, since he's been on board, I've been trained on, on a lot of the reporting that we have to do with DESI, and a lot of how to read the operating statement and going through on a monthly basis. So, yes, there is already somebody that I have working with that team, and, and I think that's a good idea that there will be some cross-training, absolutely.
Good question. I know Dennis wanted to be recognized.
Sure. I think Tim Gray and his team came before the school committee also and gave a presentation of what they'd be doing here in this city and how it'd be working. I think their, the presentation was pretty clear. It was detailed. They did a good job of presenting us with what they'd be doing with Sodexo and the food services. And this has been a few months now that this was kinda tabled in this committee. And the city council has heard some information about the, the food services management as well. I would like to make a motion to approve the contract, to send this to the full city council with our recommendation to approve the contract for the food services director with the city of Springfield.
A second. In favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I know there's several items here that we're gonna touch upon, and there's one in particular. If, if, if I may ask, that we take and table number, line item number nine, because I know there was a meeting tonight in regards to the building committee. And I think we would like to table this until we get a, a, a presentation at the DGR, and then with us, is that...
Make a motion to table item nine.
Go ahead.
So, okay, maybe everybody here at the table knows what's going on, but I surely don't.
Can we, I mean, we, if we could take it on, if you're ready to do some...
Yeah, no, I, I can explain what the plan is with bringing this to this committee.
Right, okay.
I mean, am I allowed to come?
No, that's fine.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the school committee is gonna hear a presentation on Monday evening. So, um, the, the school committee is gonna hear a presentation on Monday evening um, from the, uh, architects that are working on the new building, uh, at the Lawrence site for the middle school grades. Um, and then the thought was that those architects could come um, to this committee first to talk about, uh, then eventually presenting to the city council. Uh, well, they wanna, they wanna present a timeline of the events so that the city council's aware of some of the, um, required votes and signatures that are gonna need to be um, collected between, uh, now and the end of the, the year. So, um, I, I believe the request would be to have them come at, uh, your next meeting of the joint group and the architects are ready to come to share that timeline. But first, we thought it was appropriate that they go to the school committee, which they will be doing
Right.
on Monday evening.
The only concern-
February thirteenth, is there a connection between this and-
Yeah, so February thirteenth is a, is a community meeting as well, which is for them to, uh, hear from teachers um, and staff from four o'clock to, I think it's five thirty. And then in the evening at six o'clock, it's an open to anybody in the community to come so that they, they can share ideas about what they'd like to see in a new school. So it's soliciting input from the community and it's for community members to hear more about the project. I think their interest in coming to this group is there are some technical things that eventually have to be brought up to the city council and they want um, this committee to bring the city councilors on this committee to eventually bring it to their colleagues on the city council.
Thank you. It's just when, um, when I had heard about this, it was to my understanding that um, the, the approval by the full city council had to be done by February twentieth. And I'm seeing here it's March twentieth. So when we were like table and I'm like, well, wait a minute.
I think there was a misunderstanding of what needed to be voted on by the city council. And it's my understanding that at this time, there is no need for a vote from the city council. And when they come next, uh, well, whenever, I think your next meeting might be at the end of February. Um, that, at that point, they'll explain what the timeline of events is to um, to, uh, to this group so that, that we can be, and then we can preview the city council of, as to what is to come. But at this point, there's no need for a vote. That was a misunderstanding.
Thank you.
And that's probably why it ended up in the agenda because I felt that there was a rush on it and that's what happened.
Initially, there was this frenzy that we had to do it tonight, but, um, it, apparently there does not need to be a vote from the city council for the state, uh, the school building authority at this time. They don't, they're not requiring a vote yet from the city council. When more money needs to be appropriated um, for the project, then that would have to go to a vote of the city council.
So do you say that we consider that this was discussed or not really? Or, or do we still table it?
No, we should table item number, uh, item number nine for two things that they're gonna come in front of both committees and also there's gonna be the community meeting uh, February thirteenth, which is very important. And we should probably have the meeting after those three presentations sometimes, so.
Good. Second.
Do you have a next meeting date scheduled or not yet? Okay.
But we'll let you.
Okay. So we can just let the architects know.
So we, we're all in agreement, so I need to hear the ayes. So everybody's in agreement to table. Thank you. Okay. So, go ahead.
Two more things out of order as long as, uh, Dr. Zarek is here.
Definitely, go ahead.
Um, take number, item number four out of order. Um, where it says that Superintendent Dr. Stevens-Zarek um, attend the joint committee of the city council and the school committee and present an update on the benchmarks for the turnaround plan or an updated turnaround plan report. Um, I thought that that was done. I'm at a previous meeting and if it wasn't-
Well, I'm doing it, I'm actually doing it for the school committee this Saturday. I am gonna provide an update on the turnaround plan. It's a, I'm happy to do one for the city council if they would like, but I do think my presentation, I'd like to give to the school committee first. It's what I've been working on today. Um, and so there, we have a retreat on Saturday, the school committee does. Uh, and I will be presenting, uh, sharing some updates of where we stand. And then what are some of the priorities for the next eighteen months, but, um, if that's something that the committee desires that I share with the city council at some point, I, I would, I would do that.
I think we should table that as well. What do you think? And then coming back after your retreat.
Sounds good.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the other one that I wanted to take out of order was item number eight. Uh, this one was by, uh, Councillor Todd McGee. Um, ordered that the school apartment install new exhaust doors, fans in the kitchen and gym at Ian White School. Um, has happened done?
Well, we, the first time that Mr. Soto and I saw that was, uh, when this agenda came out. So it had never been communicated to either of us that that had come from the city council. Um, so with, you know, we would need some time to follow up on that. I know Mr. Soto and I talked about it today because we were, we knew this meeting was coming up, but the first time I saw that, this, that item was, um, when that, when this agenda was emailed. So we're happy to look into it and come back to a future me, uh, the next meeting to update you on that. Is that-
Is that fair, Mr. Soto?
Okay.
So I, I just wanna clarify that some of these, um, orders were sitting in the jacket from September and that we hadn't had no opportunity to pull them out. So that's why they came out of a sudden. It feels like it was randomly, but really it were back from September.
Yeah, it would be helpful. And I don't know, it, maybe this is Mr. Al, Ryan Allen's could do, but when something comes from the city council that we, um, that it could be emailed to me and it, that one hadn't been emailed to me, so it would be helpful to have it. I, I know it'll eventually be taken up with this committee, but that way we can prepare.
Yeah.
Um, so if, if, if a councillor has a motion that they wanna file.
We'll do. We do it for other departments. We make sure that a specific department receives it as well so that they can be-
A lot of the other ones are carryovers from last year, but that, that particular one we hadn't seen yet.
Okay. I wanna take off on seven too, cause that's, goes back to-
So that's, that get tabled?
Yeah, that's what was-
Say that again? Eight, yep. Yes, we are.
Yeah, so a motion to table, I don't think we, uh, voted on it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Think six, item six and item seven also. As long as you're here.
Sure.
We take up item six and item seven?
Yes.
Can, yes, aye. Second.
Somebody second, please. Okay.
Uh, these are both, uh, filed by, uh, Councillor Roman also. Um, the, the, the item six was an order that all school department, um, submit a school year breakdown report of all teaching staff in Holyoke Public School System and what cities they reside at. And the second report, demographic breakdown of the two thousand seventeen teaching staff. Um, furthermore, the school department provides a list of school systems, leadership team and the cities they reside in. I'm not sure why that-
I, I, I had, we had, I was not comfortable with, uh, sharing information about where people live, my, the teaching staff. I'm, I'm very, I think we did share demographic. I'm happy to bring that. That's information we can certainly share. I, I received some feedback from staff that they were concerned about, you know, I, I mean, we can send you uh, a percentage of teachers that live or, uh, not teachers, but staff that live in the city of Holyoke. But I think at one time it was a request about every staff member and where specifically they, they reside. I think we can send percentages of, uh, what percentage of our staff reside in Holyoke and which percentage of our staff? Is it, would that, would that suffice? I don't-
Yeah, I think that, that was fine, yes.
Okay.
I don't think we need people's addresses. That would not be the-
Okay, so just the percentage of peo- people, go ahead.
So if I'm not mistaken, as, well, I'm not here to speak for Council Roman, but I think if you recall, he was talking about some program for, that they do in Springfield where they bought like this building or something and-
For teachers?
They house, the, the teachers there, it's looking at how many are living in, in this area or, or e- even in our, in our city, cause I'm sure there's other teachers within our cities that aren't working in our school districts. Um, how do we get them back into our district, be it, we're hiring from the outside? So I'm wondering if that was the intention, is how do we do an incentive to?
Yeah, we have talked to the mayor's office about that um, as well. I, I thought we did provide information before, but a- a- around um, demographics and then also where people, I, I feel like we did-
You did do that, but I think it's the new leadership positions. Cause I don't think at that time, like Ms. Curtis, um, who's, uh, she's new to the district this year. So I'm thinking it's the new positions that might have opened, um, in the leadership role. Um, the new people that have come in, um, maybe that's what he's thinking.
I think that's the-
I don't know. And again, I, I, I can't-
I think that's a carryover from last year too, though. Or when was it filed? Was it filed-
Nine twenty-two seventeen.
Oh, so this year.
So it would have been within the school year.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide, um, you know, I can, we can do a breakdown of what I, what towns people live in. I mean, I could do that. Um, is, for the whole staff, the leadership team, I mean-
I'm wondering if it's like a leadership would be separate, just percentage wise? How many live in this area?
According to the order, it sells who the leadership team includes, but it also asks for a breakdown of all teaching staff too, which I thought was a lot. It says-
Is there a way to clarify with, yeah?
I, I think what we're gonna have to do is like revisit this, maybe table it. We need to figure out what Nelson actually wanted us-
It should probably just be taken off the, I would say, taken off the agenda for now until we figure, until something, another order is filed for that.
Well, the other thing is he could, he could also risk, um, as soon as we clarify, we, that's not hard information for us to get. We can bring it to the next meeting as lo- as soon as I, is, is, just to clarify exactly, I just don't wanna, the only thing I'm resistant to doing is providing the names of people and then where they live. But if it's percentages of where people live and that's, I mean, overall, that I, we certainly can do that.
So, so do we, if we if we table it, we can have them ask to redo an order? Or what happens if we just take it off? I, I've never had it taken-
Yeah, you could still redo it. So we could just table it. I could table item, uh, six. I'll make a motion to table item six.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Zarek-
Clarification?
Percentages, so that's a few things for the next-
Well, but can, can you just clarify, Ken, is there a way to clarify with Nelson or Council Roman? And then I'll come, we, we'll come back to the next meeting with that information. Yep.
Absolutely. Then item seven.
And, um, and number seven. Um, can I read, do you have a chance to look at number seven, which is, um, order that this, um, Holyoke City Councillor adopted a resolution calling on state and federal education policymakers to adopt a mem- memoratorium on the use of standardized testing to determine, um, districts find, um, finding and teaching salaries so that the educators, parents and other members of our communities can work together to develop authentic assessment systems that allow more time for educators to teach and better prepare students for lifelong learning.
Right, so I, I mean, that's, I think, a decision that you all need to, I mean, that, that's, uh, that's a motion around a moratorium on testing. So I mean, if you want my opinion on it, I can give it to you, but I also think that that's the pur- purview of the committee if they wanna support that or not. I know the school, there are members of the school committee. There are some members of the school committee that support a moratorium on testing. Um, but I think, I think that's calling for the city council to, to take that up.
But, um, so I understand you having a, a retreat this weekend. That could probably be one of your consider-
Well, I have a sense of where the school committee falls on that, that we've dis, I mean, they've discussed that, I think, many times, probably throughout the years. I, I don't wanna speak for the school committee members here. Um, but I think that's something you, maybe that's a conversation for the four of you to decide if that needs to go forward. You want the city council to take that up.
Since the maker, the maker of the order is not here, I will leave it to, I know I assigned, I, I did tag along this one. My name is not here, but I did, um, wanna be, um, written in the order for the simple reason that um, I was concerned, and I'm still concerned about standardized testing when it comes to especially the arrivals that have to test
Yes.
on, on a, on a, on a moment that they may not well be prepared. And that I do know that some of these youth in their own language would pass any test, but you know, they wouldn't and that worries me. But I also know that this may be a, uh, a legislate, you know, leg- legislature change as well. And I think we would probably, this, um, resolution may have to be called openly policy, you know, that, that may be able to make these changes if, if that's the calling that may take for it. I don't, I'm not sure.
I will, I will say, I, I, while I'm not a su- supporter of a merit, moratorium on testing in general, I have the grave concerns about our recent arrivals taking the MCAS, a high stakes test in their first year here. And I do not support, and I have not, and we are, I, I have been advocating with, we had Alice Peish here from, um, the legislature last week. We had a board member from the department here. I, I feel very strongly that we have eight, I think we have seven or eight seniors who are recent arrivals, that those young people would not have to take the assessment. Um, at this point, um, the guidance is that they do and I have significant concerns. Um, and at the school committee retreat this weekend, we're gonna talk about advocacy. And that is one place that I would like to see advocacy on behalf of those young people because I don't think that that is the, um, the right thing to do for them. Now, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Um, it is a, a bigger issue than just a Holyoke issue, cause it involves a change in policy.
Right.
For those, those people, but these are young students, these are students who never planned to be here for their senior year. They have credits uh, from their prior schooling in Puerto Rico. Um, they, other states like Florida have worked with the Department of Education, Puerto Rico to grant them their diploma from the institution that they were in prior to coming here. That's what I'd like to see for these young people because otherwise they're gonna have to do another year of high school and that never was their plan. Many of them have a plan to go to college next year and, uh, this could present a challenge for them.
Great, go ahead. Is there any way that maybe we can find out with, um, Superintendent Carvillo out of Miami-Dade County? See what specific steps he took because he's been a huge advocate especially.
But it's the department in the state of Florida to, but you're right, he probably-
Right, he probably drew up
Yeah.
some sort of, um, recommendation as to why the, the department should approve it. Um, because knowing, you know, Miami-Dade, it's very diverse and many ended up in in South Florida.
Yeah.
So.
Be good.
I was just under the understanding that, uh, that they would, that anyone that came over from Puerto Rico as seniors or juniors would have to do the MCAS. But I was also under the understan- under the understanding that um, it wouldn't count towards them not getting their diplomas at the same time. I thought that there was work um, happening between, um, the state and Puerto Rico. I'd like to do more research on that, but that was the understanding.
There is a conversation. There is conversation, but, uh, as of just yesterday, Mr. Brown, the principal at Holyoke High did contact the state again for clarity and they, while they say they are working on it, to your point, Mr. Burks, the response is still that as of right now, they have to take the MCAS.
Well, would it, would it stop them from graduating if they did-
Right now-
perform proficiently on the MCAS test?
Right now, while they're working on it, it, it would, until we get definitive uh, uh, direction, otherwise, right now, the policy still stands. They are working on it, I think, and they're looking at it, but um, right now, we haven't received any guidance that would allow them to receive their diploma, which is troubling.
I'd like to do a little more research on that. The other, the other part on here was, um, connecting teacher salaries to standardized tests. That isn't happening at the moment, right?
No, we, in a whole, we do have a performance based compensation system, but it's based on your performance as a, um, on an evaluation rubric. Um, and, uh, it's not directly tied to, um, stan- standardized test performance. It looks at the body of your work.
Is there any, any way that if it doesn't get approved about the MCAS? But then if Puerto Rico submits the diploma?
That I don't know. Um, but I, I can assure you that I will, this is something I, I'm gonna, we're gonna dig deeper in because it does affect an, an, a significant number of our kids right now, so.
Still receiving more families from Puerto Rico?
It's slowed down, but, um, we expect it to pick up again, uh, once the weather improves. I mean, that's what Betty has communicated to me.
Why, when, I even, I even wonder if this testing, if it cannot be exempt, but at least be taken in their own language, I bet you a lot of these students will pass.
No question.
Or given with accommodations.
Right, accommodations.
No question.
If we build accommodations around just that testing portion.
Because what, what we, as, as we struggling, if we think about what happened here in two thousand and three, the first group of students in, in the state in general here in Massachusetts, a lot of those were students who were not proficient, not only Spanish speaking, there were Russians, there were a group of a lot of women, there were thousands and thousands of students. So these are numbers that are really troubling to our, our, our ways of saying whether we are, you know, graduating or not, because once they have a certificate of attainment, it's not under your numbers saying they graduated. So this is not going to be looking good for Holyoke at all as a state, and I think that's what we need to look at when it comes to what can we do to help.
And when, when I look at the, what, what I found to be interesting, you know, people say Holyoke has a high dropout rate. Well, what, while there are dropouts, a bigger, a, a, more significant than people realize, the dropout issue is also tied to kids not passing the MCAS. So they're not dropping out, right? But they're not getting, I'm, I'm sorry, not dropout, graduation rate. The graduation rate is tied, many of the kids aren't grad, graduating, because they're getting their certificate of completion rather than a diploma. And that number is much higher than I initially thought when I came here. And a big part of the low graduation rate here is kids actually completing their coursework, but not passing the MCAS in one or more of the tests, there's three tests, science, math, and ELA. And so every, you know, Mr. Brown and I have a list right now of the fifty kids that still need, we need to get passed to graduate. And that number is a big part of the low graduation rate here.
How many are from Dean?
Dean, well, we have a small class at Dean, so not many.
What's the percentage of your class of two thousand eighteen?
At Dean? I think Dean has maybe sixty kids, fifty-five kids.
And the percentage of those kids that didn't pass the MCAS that might get.
It's actually not as.
Certificate of attendance.
Yeah, it's actually not as disproportionate as it probably you would think. I, I don't know offhand how many are at Dean, but the numbers are, Dean has done a good job of getting kids prepared now. I mean, getting kids to pass the, the MCAS. But yeah, they still have, yeah, they still, I can give you the breakdown of by school. Way too many in both places.
So I, I am in support of the moratorium, because I'm not totally against standardized testing, but I am against how they determine the district finding in terms of levels and, and things like that. I don't think that does any district any good to be leveled or called out for being a failing district or a district that is, is underperforming or anything like that. When you call a district out like that, you're calling out our students, and you're calling out our teachers. And it hasn't been good for our city as a whole since all of this started in using the level system and the way that their accountability works in the state. And it hasn't been good for us at all. And one of the reasons that I am for the moratorium is exactly that. And when, especially when you look at the demographics in our school system and the kids that are doing those standardized tests. Glad you made an excellent point about some of the students who may have just came from another country or from, or from Puerto Rico, who was used to learning in their native language, and now is forced to test in English. That's not fair at all, not to anyone, not to the students, and not to the district who is being held accountable for teaching those students, especially if we don't have the resources to do those things adequately anyway. So. Even though I'm for the, the moratorium, and those are my reasons why I'm for the moratorium, I would, I would still like to table this item also, item seven, because I would also like to do more research on what are happening to the students who came here because of the hurricane, and know if they're going to be able to be tested in their native language. If they opt to choose to do that, I think that's only fair, and, and that should be able to happen. And if not, then where do we go from there? And I would support the moratorium definitely on, on that basis. Also, special education students as well, and some of those students who have some difficulties testing, and are they being accommodated appropriately and all, and everything that goes along with it? I mean, we are a fairly unique district when it comes to schools and our demographics and, and things like that. And people who've come here, they see that, and they understand it. And they know the struggles that people have gone through, and they've also seen the successes. There are a lot of success stories too. But I think that knowing our demographics, our students in this district should be able to, at the very least, help those students who might test better in their native language. So I would table this until the next meeting also, can do some research, find out where those conversations are headed.
I would, I would like to charge you as well to see how much information you can get us as we table this, and then.
For the, for the seniors.
Yes, and I know that time is as an evidence right now, but sooner than later that we can understand what's going to happen or if they're willing to, again, I understand this may have to be a, a, a policy change, but maybe have allowing them, if there's any testings that can be. I don't know if any other states have translated some of these testings, that even if they have to then take it, that it is translated.
I, I don't know that they're going to be able to translate this, the assessments. My recommendation would be for these students to allow them to secure their diplomas from the, the institution that they were at before. So give them credit for the time that they've spent here for their senior year, but have the, the institutions in Puerto Rico issue them a diploma. That's what I've been advocating for on behalf of our kids, and I can provide you with a, as updated, you know, responses I get, because this is a conversation that my team is having regularly, Iliana, myself, Luis, you know, with the state about, about these students in particular. The guidance councils at Holyoke High have been regularly asking us, what information do you have, what information?
Or even finding out from what the, the Miami-Dade, Dade County, was it?
Miami-Dade County.
Yeah, County did, to, to kind of get us to understand and.
But it has to be through the State Department, I mean, the State Department of Education in the state of Florida did that on behalf of all students. And so we would need our department to do the same. So I, I can certainly give you whatever updated information, but I, I, I'm, I feel strongly, very strongly, that, that, that needs, that this practice needs to be changed on behalf of those kids, because I don't think it's fair to them.
It's not fair. I mean, they, they've already went through a horrible experience.
Of course.
And now, they didn't ask for this, so for them to, it's like a second slap across their faces. And these are young, young bodies, men and women of the future, and we have to protect that.
No question.
And we, and we also, at the other end of the, the career or employment opportunities is a disservice as well. When they don't have a diploma, they don't have opportunities to enter, you know, even a college opportunity, jobs that are asking you for diploma or high set, so this is something to look at. And I, I want to be, you know, I, I want to be noted on this, this is not new. I also feel that we've, we had numbers, if we go back to two thousand and three and two thousand and four, how these, some of these individuals who were still coming here being tested for less than a year. So I don't think it should be only because those who are just arrived because of the, the, but anyone who's here less than a year and they're seniors and they're being put in that spot, when I've seen their academic grades, and there are some of them were honor roll in Puerto Rico, and then all of a sudden, they're, they're encountering themselves, you're not graduating. Very devastating, and there were hundreds, there was not, and not only, you know, so I want us to look at this, because this data is there. It goes back, and that brought us, I was at the school board then, it brought us to demonstrate the, 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 the non-graduating that made us look like we're not graduating students, because you were getting like, probably seventy to eighty kids not graduating.
Well, those kids, as, as you point out, those students right now would count as non-graduates of the Holyoke Public Schools this year.
That's right.
And in the way, if the policy that stands is, is enacted, then those eight students or seven students would count against our graduation rate. But it's not, it really isn't about us, it's about them, it's about their futures.
That's why I'm saying that, it's because it's affecting them in the long.
It will affect them, and, and they, what they would have to do is another year potentially of school, because they'd have to, and, you know, these are kids who, many of them are very talented students, they came with the aspirations to go to college. And you're right, the door, if they stay here, the doors will, many doors will be closed to them for not having a diploma. A certificate of attainment is not the same thing.
And even, and even some training opportunities that you can give them requires you to have a high set or a diploma? So it's like, there's not many options, so I just want us to really rethink this, and I'm glad that, you know, it really came up, because we're around the corner from June, so, so thank you. If you think you, is it any other questions?
Just a, I guess a statement, it's something to be on the lookout for. Now, the STAR benchmark assessments, those can be given in alternate languages, so that students who would, now the benchmark assessments, they collect data throughout the year to make sure that you're making progress. And they're different from standardized, but very important, and I think more important than.
In their own language, you say?
And they can give it in different languages, so if you're more comfortable taking it in another, in Spanish, then you can take the benchmark assessments in Spanish. I don't know if that started yet. Well, something that I would like to see is a comparison of maybe years in the past before those assessments were offered in, in Spanish, and then compare them to years, maybe just this year pretty much, and then maybe next year, and see if there's any improvement.
I don't know that we have a clear, it's a great point. I don't know if we have a clear policy, though, on which students get it in Spanish first, which students get it in English. I can look at that, because now that the LOOK bill has passed, the new bilingual ed law, it allows us more flexibility too, in our ability to assess students in their native language. Before, it, you weren't allowed to teach in the native language. Now, though, it allows us more flexibility, and, you know, our director of VLLs, Anna Lugo, can certainly speak to that at some point. But I think, so we don't really have, I think, great data right now, because we weren't really allowed to, we could give it as, you know, as an information point, but I don't think we've been consistently doing that. Now that the law's passed, we're going to be able to have much more flexibility of how we treat level one and level two English learners. And so our ability to assess them in their native language, and our, the assessment system that Holyoke Public Schools uses internally, to Mr. Burks's point, does have the ability to test kids in English and in Spanish. So I can, that's something we can talk, you know, we can look at in the future, and I'm happy to have Ms. Lugo at some point talk about that now that we have more flexibility in how we teach children who are developing English. The handcuffs are off.
There's two things, you know, there's two things I'd be interested in that, one is, do those scores go up? If that happens, and the other is just the percentage of students who opt to take it in another language. I don't know how many students would say I'd rather take it, the test, but those are two things in the future that I'll be.
Sure, absolutely.
Kind of looking at.
Okay.
Because the option is to opt out is already there for those who have an IEP, right?
Yeah, oh, anybody?
Any, well.
No, you're talking about the MCAS?
Yeah, the.
He's not talking about the MCAS, he's talking about.
The STAR.
The STAR.
Okay, okay.
We give it to every, we give it to every student in the district, just so we know how kids are performing. It does allow us to, we have to provide accommodations for students who are on IEPs. You know, a parent, I suppose a parent could opt out, but we test everybody. It does, the difference is this assessment does allow us to test in Spanish, which the MCAS does not allow you to do.
We should be the first community to pilot that one, the standardized.
Yeah, no, it would be very, you know.
Right, to see what happens? Just to see what happens to that group that is here now, that we're about not to graduate if they don't pass.
Right.
Just to have a sense of what would happen.
So that we can do a little more research on.
Yeah, so we're going to table that and allow.
Table item seven.
And allow Dr. Shreik to look into this a little bit more and give us the next time around more information.
Sure.
Second.
Call in favor.
All right.
So we all said, I think, right, with.
Just two and three is left.
But it's not, yeah, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
The other ones are not pertaining to you?
Who wants me to stay here?
I'm sorry, so quick thing, because I'm noticing items two and three are the same thing here, but actually, item two should read that ordered that the chief of police appear before the joint committee of the city council and school committee with statistics of all arrests made this year of Holyoke Public School students. But instead, in here, we got, it's, they're both the same, it's the same one. So two should read that way.
Can I, yeah. Can I read on, can I, I like, so number. Council committee person updated on the benchmarks, this one was done. The second open demographic, I thought was done. This one. The one, that one I don't have, the one you just read.
Oh, because it's on our, on our previous meeting minutes, that's where it is.
Yeah, because they were taped, okay, yeah.
So it must have transcribed over here accidentally, and it's, it's number three two times. Like, they're both the same thing, description, qualification needed and selection process.
Oh, okay.
But number two should have had, had to do with the statistics of all the arrests.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's not shown, okay. So, I know that, can I speak on this one here? That I know we, we receive correspondence on this, the, the statistic to do with the arrest. So if we could at least possibly moving and voting that, that it's been complied with? Would you say that the one with the statistics has been complied with?
Yes and no.
Yes and no, okay, let me know, so let's discuss.
And I'll tell you why. Yes, in the sense that, yes, he did comply. He gave it to us August seventh of two thousand seventeen, which had to do with the previous year's arrests, which was a total of thirty-two arrests, according to the chief. We're now in a new school year, budget season is coming around, and again, one of the line, line items in there is what we pay out for SROs. So I would really like to see is, how many arrests are we at now? Because when I'm looking here, out of the thirty-two from last year, fifteen of them had to do with disruption, disturbance or interruption of school and disorder, or disorderly. So I don't know what that really means, so I don't know if he can just kind of give us a brief explanation of what does disorderly look like to you? Is disorderly, because a student may have cursed and said the F word out loud, and now he's being disruptive and disruption of the assembly, correct?
Usually, disturbance would usually be about a fighting, is what I, I would take it to be.
Okay, or would that fall under assault and battery? Because we have assault and battery.
Assault and battery, sometimes it could be a fighting, but disturbance, yeah, could be disturbing the assembly in some way.
Okay. So, so now I kind of want to see where are we now at this year? Because I, I am looking here, that PEC had five last year, Holyoke High had twenty, Dean had three. Where are we at now? Because I mean, it's trickling into our junior, our, our middle school students, where we're having police officers going into the school and arresting a young child that might be in first grade kindergarten, that's, might be just going to the office and seeing a student walking out in handcuffs. That's impactful to me. I don't know how the child is interpreting what they're seeing, but I don't think that that's really things that should be happening. but I don't think that that's really things that should be happening.
Right, 'cause it, it, it sort of gives the child that, this is natural.
Can I, can I, we, let me just make something clear, because of the way the order has been filed, we sort of kinda like asking for a different order then, so what we're gonna have to do, whoever's interested can file that particular order to have a most recent update, the, seeing that this was back from August. And then that will be the next, that's where he will have to respond, 'cause he did respond to the oldest, so he's still on the oldest order, and we're bringing up a different issue of what's happening now. If somebody's willing to file that, then we can do that.
Technically, we have to approve this, because yes, he did comply, he gave us both things, but then, um, we file a new order to then it, for it to be presented at the next joint school committee.
Any other committee that we may have, so stating that now we want a most recent update type of results from what we've had, because this data could have been selected from their year up to August, so now we're beyond August, I don't know, you know, what's happened, so. It's up to you, that, since you have the questions and concerns.
So to file the order, is that something that we do in this meeting, or is it something that you do independently? Okay.
You file an order, yeah. This is how the orders come about, somebody having a concern, you file it, and it comes to the committee, and that's how we go about it. And I also wanna clarify for the public that, um, the way that the joint committee had agreed in, in our, in our, in the order that, um, Mr. Devon Sheen had filed was that every other, every other year, am I correct, Dennis? Uh, we would take a role, so this time I called up on this meeting, it should have been the school committee board calling it, but we all can always file an order, doesn't necessarily be that one or the other, it has to be either one. If you have a concern, that's where the orders come up. So, okay, and then that's how they get filed.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, so, are we?
Then motion to accept, is that what we're gonna say? Motion to accept items two and three as complied?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So. It looks like we have covered them all. Go ahead.
So. Is there a possibility, or maybe it's not here, um, maybe it is by order also, um, that the joint school committee start setting set, um, meeting times, or meeting dates, so that way each month, I think, versus us, you know, waiting for a couple months and coming up with so many, maybe addressing, so that way we can have meaningful thought for each, you know, so maybe next, next month it has to do with the MS.
Yeah, that, that would like to bring that, that, um, that one should come up next. Um, I think they thought it was gonna be the end of February.
They were saying the twenty-sixth.
The twen- I heard that tonight, that they think they're coming here on the twenty-sixth of February, does that sound?
Yeah, that's our next meeting, so I think that's what they were looking at to present.
Next meeting of this group?
No, that's our, ours, school, I mean, uh, council.
Oh, for the council, okay, all right. Okay.
Is it, is it a Monday, no, so it's?
February twenty-sixth, you said, is a Monday.
Was it? So then.
That would be the twenty-seventh, it's the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I don't. I, I hate to. I'll get it, maybe I'll, I'll check with, um, let me just, I'll get in touch with Mr. Burks about whether when the architect would like to come and speak to this group.
Yeah, 'cause if he decides to come February twenty-sixth, you guys don't have meetings the Mondays, right? It's mainly Tuesdays. So then, if we would know by the beginning of next week, then, um, Mr. Burks can just call a meeting to order for the twenty-sixth.
They'll present, you said they're gonna be presenting to the school board on Monday.
Yeah, well, so let's chat, let's talk with them on Monday at the school committee meeting, if you want, if you don't mind checking with them and seeing if they would, you know, when they'd like to come, or find a date when they could come here.
Absolutely, I think twenty-sixth sounds good too.
And I know that going, responding to Milton, Milton just brought a, a, um, a thought about coming up with dates for next meetings, we just had to do the same thing for the city council, because we're conflicting with some of the other committees, so we're coming up with dates and putting it up in the calendar that we're checking in the back, 'cause it was very
We have.
Challenging with the, with the, with the, um, trying to schedule, uh, committee meetings, so.
I just got notification, we have a meeting scheduled for DGR on Monday, the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we'll figure out a date, it works for all of us, and until then, we have that school committee meeting that anybody can come to, actually, if you want to come before, then come to that, you can hear the presentation. Um, and then the February thirteenth, uh, meeting at Lawrence at, uh, six o'clock. Uh, that'll be there, that'll be there also, that's also open to the community, so that, um, they can hear where we are in the design process and what the plans are looking like.
Actually, every building committee, the one where I was before, those are all public meetings too, because there are elected, uh, the mayor appoints that committee. Um, and so there are, um, you know, that, those are, those, they meet, we're meeting every week now. So, and those, anybody can come to those meetings anytime to hear the conversations at those sessions.
Okay. So, there will be a public meeting on February thirteenth at Lawrence School regarding the building, um, order that has been discussed this evening at six o'clock, correct?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. So, any other? So, do we, so this, we would adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.